From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, and welcome to the Tuesday, March 14, 2017, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We are going to begin today's meeting with a flag salute, and this is going to be led by Audrey Pitzer. She is the daughter of the current chapter of the Red Cross Board Chair, Amanda Pitzer. And if you could please, good morning, if you could please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation. You can pull that microphone down. There you go. Perfect.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Audrey. Okay, the next item on our agenda will be our consent agenda. If you'd like to follow along with our agendas today, they are available on the two tables near the doors. All items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So at this time, I'll read the consent agenda items. If you begin on page two of our agenda, items six and seven are on consent. And on page three, item 10, as well as 12 through 16 are on consent. On page four, all items 17 through 23 are on consent. On page five, item 24, as well as 26 through 31 are on consent. On page six, item 32 is on consent, as well as 34 through 38. And finally, on page seven, items 39 and 40 are on consent. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comments on any of the items that are on consent? Okay, seeing honor, return to the board for a motion.
Motion to consent.
Second.
You have a motion, a second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you very much. And now, if you return to page two on our agenda, we'll begin with resolutions and proclamations. The first is item number one, proclaim March 2017 as American Red Cross Month in Kern County, and Supervisor Maggard will make this presentation. Thank you very much. Does this require a motion? Madam Clerk, motion to approve. Thank you.
Certainly.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Hi. How are you? Nice to see you.
You too.
Tell me, remind me what your role is with the Red Cross.
I'm the board chair.
Board chair, okay. Hey, guys. All right. It's your session. I'm sitting here.
Good morning, everyone. Good to see you this morning. I'm here to talk about it being proclaimed Red Cross Month in Kern County. I'm joined by Amanda Pitzer, who is our chairman of the board or president?
Board.
Of the board, of the Red Cross Board. And I'll let you introduce these guys in a second. Want to talk just for a second about the significance that Red Cross has in our community. Since 1917, Red Cross has served Kern County families, bringing comfort and hope to them in the midst of a crisis. Last year, they do many other things besides that, but last year, they installed 631 smoke detectors in our community and served 231 families just in the Erskine Fire. So they are a tremendous source of comfort to people when they're in crisis. I have had experience, sorry, I'm a little taller than the last lady who was here. I've had the extraordinary experience of standing on the corner in Olddale while a house was still smoldering, the flames had just been put out, the property was burned to the ground, it was a mobile home, and the family was out on the curb because on the curb was the Red Cross van. And it was like, you know, a ray of sunshine through dark clouds that were there on the sidewalk that this family walked up and got help from. So I'm grateful for what you guys do. You make a tremendous difference in people's lives, and I'd like to give you this. And then could you tell us a little bit about what's going to happen this month? So this is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, on behalf of the State of California. We have officially proclaimed March 2017 as American Red Cross Month in Kern County. This recognition has been entered into our official board minutes, signed by our Chairman and the Honorable Zach Scrivner. On this, the 14th day of March. Thank you for what you do. Please tell us a little bit more about what's going to happen. And introduce us to your friends.
Yes. Public Affairs.
Okay. So I have Jason Townsend, Lieutenant Jason Townsend with BPD. He is our vice chair of the board. And then this is Cindy Hukey. She is our public affairs liaison and volunteer extraordinaire. And I am Amanda Pitzer, the board chair. And what I want to share is that the American Red Cross is an iconic piece of American history, a beacon of hope as it works to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. This is done by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. And this is certainly no exception here in Kern County, where we are celebrating a century of service that is 100 years of serving the residents of Kern County. Last year alone, we had over 300 volunteers donate over 17,000 hours to provide relief to over 200 families affected by local disasters. They trained over 4,600 individuals in life-saving CPR and first aid. They installed over 600 free smoke detectors and educated the families on fire safety. They assisted over 100 military families in emergency communications. So as Chair of the Board of Directors and on behalf of the American Red Cross Kern County, I want to thank you for recognizing the extraordinary work of the American Red Cross here in our community and for proclaiming March as Red Cross Month. Thank you.
Come stand right here. Okay. Put your stand in the middle. Good on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Item number two, proclaim March 25, 2017, as Scottish Gathering and Games Day in Kern County, and Supervisor Couch will make this presentation.
Motion on the proclamation.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
It's my honor today to make this presentation. The Kern County Scottish Society was established in 1973, and it's really there to honor, promote the Scottish heritage, and to recognize the contributions of the Scottish people. Not only do they make contributions, but these people know how to have fun. And the 22nd competition of the Scottish Gathering and Games Day, and Games, rather, is going to be on March 25. That's the right date, right? Okay. So we're here today to proclaim March 25 as Scottish Gathering and Games Day in Kern County. I'm going to read the proclamation. I want to turn this over to Bruce Marshall and Gary Lockhart, who are with the Kern County Scottish Society, and allow them to say a couple of words. The proclamation reads, "The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed March 25, 2017, as Scottish Gathering and Games Day in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered in the official board minutes, signed by the Honorable Chairman Zach Scrivner." So I'll turn it over to you guys. Tell us a little bit of what you have. I know you'll see, if you, if you guys have never been to this, you will see some athletic contests, the likes of which you won't see anywhere else, I would submit, other than right here. So guys, congratulations, and tell us a little bit more about it.
Good morning. I'm Gary Lockhart. I'm the chieftain of the Kern County Scottish Society this year, and this is Bruce Marshall. He's immediate past chieftain. And I think this year is going to be a very good event. We have, actually have a very good children's program set up because our games are family games. And people talk about what the games actually are. Well, that's big man throwing big objects. The caber, a sanctioned caber weighs 180 pounds, and it looks like a telephone pole. And the idea is to toss it end for end so that it's laying straight out in front of you, which is a perfect score. Any other, the score goes way down. They throw big rocks. They throw things over their head, and occasionally, they don't get out of the way in time. And what it was designed for, to get the best Highlanders for the chieftain. They were his personal guard. We have a number of food vendors, from everything, from hamburgers to haggis. Haggis is the traditional Scottish poor man's food, which was, you know, considered the last dying attempt to have another day, okay, for the starving people. Bruce is more of the administrative type, so I've got a good, I've got a really good team this time. Bruce?
Thank you. Like Gary said, we will have the heavy athletics out there. Along with that, we will have Celtic music, both traditional and rock. We'll have petting zoos. We'll have genealogy. You can come out and maybe look in, up your genealogy and trace back your Scottish heritage. We'll also have a bagpipe competition this year, which is growing in numbers as the day goes on. And just come out and have a good time, and weather should be good, so come out and support your Scottish-American heritage. Thank you.
I might add that we're going to have a ceremony in our tea room of the marriage of Queen Mary when she was 11 years old, and this is a high tea considered, and it's all formal dress from the early centuries.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item number three, but I'm also going to ask that we consider item number five. Supervisor Perez, we're making both presentations. The first, item number three, is to proclaim March 27 through 31, 2017, as National Boys and Girls Club Week in Kern County. And item number five is to proclaim March 14 through 20, 2017, as Women's Military History Week in Kern County. And I'll ask for a motion on both items.
Thank you, Chairman. Motion on both proclamations.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
So Boys and Girls Club is up first.
Have with me this morning the one and only Zane Smith, Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Kern County, and he'll have a moment to pronounce his guess as well when we hear from him. It is a distinct privilege to be here with you as we honor, celebrate, and thank the one and only National Boys and Girls Club. Only one week here in Kern County, but we really should celebrate what you do every day. The program and activities provided, the programs and activities provided by the Boys and Girls Club here in Kern County are truly, truly remarkable and so vital to the lives of our young people. By providing a safe and friendly space for young people throughout this county to continue to learn and play after regular school hours, the Boys and Girls Club of Kern County are providing an invaluable service to all of us. I am so fortunate to have two of the three clubhouses in my district. Armstrong Center, the place in which I grew up and played as a young person, Nile Street in my district, and of course, the Lamont Clubhouse, in addition to the many campus-based clubs that provide services at schools all over Kern County. The incomparable Zane Smith and his dedicated team provide fun, educational, and innovative programs that help kids and teens meet their full potential. We are so grateful for the work that they do day in and day out. Congratulations on all that you do for our young people and this community. I so proudly join my colleagues today in proclaiming the week of March 27 through the 31, 2017, as National Boys and Girls Club Week here in Kern County. The Board of Supervisors and the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed March 27 through the 31 as National Boys and Girls Club Week in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes and signed, of course, by our Honorable Chairman Zach Scrivner. Thank you. Zane, the floor is yours.
Thank you, ma'am. I too have a problem with the lady being taller than I am. Esteemed supervisors, it is an honor to be here. I'd like to introduce you to Board Member Alan Crowder and my colleagues Maggie Kuschlein and Linda Solinger. Boys and Girls Club Week is very special in our hearts because it is a chance to highlight what our children are learning and what they're creating, and we open our doors to the community for tours. There will be activities, everything from computer coding to baseball clinic, something that we're especially proud of, that will be announced fairly shortly, but so this is a secret just amongst us. We are working with Arvin right now. They have a community center out in a neighborhood, and we piloted a winter day camp. We had 25 kids come to the winter day camp, which, starting off, was pretty good for us. And we'll be opening a after-school program. It'll be limited to homework assistance, but primarily to feed children who have food insecurities in that part of the community. Our goal is to serve about 300 children on a daily basis and get the meals passed out, and then offer an enrichment activity to them as well. So keep an eye out, there's going to be lots of good announcements, more things on the horizon for the Boys and Girls Club, and thank you for your support, especially Supervisor Perez, because without the community's support and the leadership that we have, we wouldn't be moving forward, and we keep moving forward each and every day. So, thank you.
Excellent. Please ask Alan to say a few words if that's okay. Chairman Scrivner, if you would indulge me, please, just for a moment, Mr. Crowder, the beloved Mr. Alan Crowder, as we know, will be leaving us here shortly, of course, only physically, in spirit with us always. And I will consider it to be one of the greatest contributions to this county that I helped recruit Alan Crowder to the Board of Boys and Girls Club, so I would like to take credit for that this morning, shamelessly, and ask Mr. Crowder to come forward if you could say a few words. Your service there has been heartfelt, fully, with full-blown dedication and good faith, and he never misses an opportunity to come in my office and lobby me on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, which I think is well-deserved, all things considered. Mr. Crowder.
Just like to add my, basically what Zane said. We appreciate the board's support. The county provided a community development block grant funds to completely renovate that kitchen that serves so many kids every day, so we are really, really grateful to the county for that. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Chairman. Alan, we'll take a photo. One, two. You can look in there now? Okay. Awesome. Okay, thank you, guys. Keep up the good work. Keep up the good work. I see you guys. Thank you. Chairman Scrivner, if I may handle item five on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is to Dick Taylor.
Right here.
Dick? Excellent. Come on over. Good to see you, Dick.
Patty Martinez.
Wonderful. Patty Martinez. Nice to meet you. It's a pleasure. Thank you. You know, in 1968, after my mother had graduated from East High, she traveled to Fort Benning, Georgia, where she spent years caring for, in the medical field, soldiers who were on the front lines, literally. Forty years later, my kid sister would travel all the way to Fort Benning, Georgia, same place that my mother had been four decades prior, and serve our armed forces, served in the armed forces, our US military, and once again, serve and care for our soldiers. Chairman Scrivner, I appreciate the opportunity to make this particular proclamation this morning, and I want to say thank you. The week of March 14 through the 20, 2017, is very personal to me and to so many, as Women's Military History Week in Kern County. Women have served in every American conflict in some capacity since the Revolutionary War, and this week, we honor all of these women for their contributions and immense sacrifice. Our very own Kern County Veteran Services Department, along with the generosity of Kaiser Permanente, recently unveiled a monument at the Kern County Museum commemorating the service of Kern County's Rosie the Riveter's. These ladies are some of the finest examples of the greatest generation. I am fortunate to have the two that I mentioned to you within my own family, but there are many, many more unnamed and only a few that we get to recognize. Chairman and members of the board, I am deeply, sincerely, and personally honored to join you today as we value, honor, celebrate the women in military, and proclaim March 14 through the 20, 2017, as Women's Military History Week in Kern County. We salute them for their courage, for their honor, and all that they do for this country. Thank you. Do you want to say, okay, Patty Martinez?
No, Penny.
Penny.
Good morning, and thank you very much for this honor. I too am a United States Air Force veteran. I am a military rep, my whole entire family, and my mother is one of those Rosie the Riveter's. So it's, and I work with women veterans every day for the Kern Patriot Partnership. So it is my honor and privilege to be representing these women today. So thank you very much for naming the March 14 through the 20 as Women's History Week. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Scrivner, and Supervisor Perez, and supervisors, Dick Taylor, your County Veteran Service Officer, and it is an incredibly inspirational group of women that, from the Revolutionary War, that we recognize this week, and many from here in Kern County, and that many of us here in Kern County have connections with. And as Supervisor Perez mentioned, her mother and her sister are veterans. We have veterans, your staff, that are employees that work in our office that are veterans. They bring a great honor to that, to that role. And matter of fact, my counterpart in Los Angeles County, retired Brigadier General Ruth Wong, who's a very good friend of mine, she's the County Veteran Service Officer for LA County. I know our County Administrative Officer, Mr. Alsop, worked with her in a previous capacity. And it's women like that, she served as a flight nurse during Desert Storm, evacuating injured soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, out of the combat zones and battlefields. And so, and as Supervisor Perez mentioned, we recently unveiled through the generosity of Kaiser, this monument, a permanent monument at the Kern County Museum. It's a really cool monument, as the inscription of that iconic figure of the woman that we can do it tile up there. But also, this is a perfect segue, if I may, to let you know, and also, I might add, Penny Martinez is our Executive Director of the Kern Patriot Partnership, connecting veterans with employers willing to give veterans a first look when it comes time to hire. Doing a great job, just absolutely smashing barriers and smashing records with the amount of people that her and her team are getting hired. But my segue is that this Friday, March 17, my wife and I are honored to again serve as guardians on an honor flight out of, on our way to Washington DC, and we're taking 50 Vietnam veterans. Several are women, and served our country honorably, and so, if I may plug, on Sunday, March 19, at 8:00 PM, out at Liberty High School, we will be all returning, and our Vietnam veterans, including these women, will be returning to Liberty High School. So we would be honored and request anybody watching or listening to this to show up. Phenomenal history lesson. If you want to keep your kids up late night, just before a school night, I think that would probably be appropriate, and I know the veterans would really, really appreciate it. We're watching the WeatherEye pretty close, because you know that DC is getting hammered right now with snow, so we're hoping to get a little bit of that cleared. right now with snow, so we're hoping to get a little bit of that cleared out by the time we get there Friday, but we're excited about it. And again, we're very grateful for your Board's support of veterans in general, and particularly the recognition of women and their contribution and inspirational exemplary service to this nation and this county. Thank you very much.[616.91][616.91](applause).
Thank you. Dick, let me know if you need anything. Right away. Thanks, Dick. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. And for our final presentation, item number four is to proclaim March 2017 as March for Meals Month in Kern County, and Supervisor Gleason will make this presentation.
Motion on proclamation.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved. All eyes.
Yeah, thanks. Come on up. Don't be bashful. It's an honor today to stand before you and proclaim March 2017 as March for Meals Month in Kern County, signed by our Board of, Director of our, Chairman of our Board of Supervisors, the Honorable Zach Scrivner. As we all know, the Meals on Wheels in America established in the National March on Wheels Campaign in 2002, to recognize this historic month, the importance of Older Americans Act nutrition programs, and to raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in Kern County. With an average life expectancy nearing 80, living longer means more years spent in the struggles that accompany old age. The Meals on Wheel Program provides nutritious meals to seniors, helping them maintain their health and independence, and avoid unnecessary hospitalizations and/or premature institutionalization. The senior population in America is expected to double by the year 2050, and as the older adult population in Kern County continues to grow, we expect to see an upsurge in the need for these senior nutrition and social programs. With me is Lido, who's going to tell us a little bit more about your program. Lido, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Gleason. Good morning, members of the Board, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. I'm joined here today by our contracted provider for our nutrition program from NOR, Michelle Olrich, and from Bakersfield Senior Center, Lily Parker. March for Meals is a nationwide campaign designed to recognize the efforts of the local March, local Meals on Wheels providers and a nutrition program as a whole. It's also designed to encourage individuals to volunteer for the program. Whether you talk about deliveries to frail, homebound seniors or the 18 senior centers that we operate throughout Kern County, the senior nutrition program is an essential part of their lives. For many, it's the only meal they receive for that day. It's an opportunity for also for them to socialize at the many senior centers that we have for, throughout Kern County. This helps reduce the amount of isolation which so many of them face. One important value of the Meals on Wheels program is that rapport that happens between the driver and the client, or the senior for that matter. This is so essential, because it not only serves as a welfare check for that senior, but it also allows that senior, again, to talk with that individual, share with them what's going on in their daily lives. Last year, we served over 347,000 meals in a nutrition program throughout Kern County, and we couldn't have really done this without our collaborative partners, North of the River Parks and Recreation and Bakersfield Senior Center. And I also want to thank your nutrition staff that works so tirelessly to not only prepare the meals, but deliver the meals as well, and our numerous and countless volunteers that we have throughout the community that are packing meals, serving meals, delivering meals, that helps reduce the cost of the overall program. Again, we couldn't do it without them. In the coming days, many dignitaries will be involved in this March for Meals Campaign, serving, preparing, cooking meals, that kind of thing, just again, to create an awareness. Now, with KGOV's assistance, I'd like to show you a short video regarding the March for Meals Campaign.
Join Meals on Wheels in the 15th Annual March for Meals to celebrate the seniors in our communities and the ways we can all support them. For the month of March, all across the country, communities will join together to take a stand for the millions of seniors struggling with hunger and isolation. Meals on Wheels is a proven collaboration of local community organizations, businesses, all levels of government, and more than 2 million dedicated volunteers. Together, we deliver the nutritious meals, friendly visits, and safety checks that are often all it takes for our seniors to remain in their own homes where they want to be. And by doing so, we save billions of dollars in nursing facilities, hospitals, and healthcare costs. The 2017 March for Meals promises to be our greatest campaign ever, with more participating communities, more national attention, and a greater focus on the issue, and what each of us can do to keep our senior neighbors more nourished and healthy. So, join the march. Celebrate March for Meals in your own way. Donate what you can. Hold a fundraising event so others can give. Speak out to elected officials, or join the dedicated Army of Volunteers who are committed to making sure that our senior neighbors are not forgotten. March with us.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to turn the mic over to Lily Parker from Bakersfield Senior Center.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. Again, I'm Lily Parker. I am the Director at Bakersfield Senior Center. We're located at 534th Street in District 5. I do want to say thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you for taking the time out, for actually presenting us with the presentation proclamation this morning. I would like to also invite each of you to come out during the week of the 20th through the 24th and enjoy our nutrition lunch, so you can have the experience of your life. Thank you.
Thank you.[988.23][988.23](applause). Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right, that concludes our resolutions and proclamations, and the next item on our agenda will be public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the Board on any matter, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the Board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. If you'd like to make a public statement, please come forward. We ask that you state your name and observe our two-minute time limit. Good morning, Mr. Scott.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivner, Supervisors. As always, it's a pleasure to come to you and invite you to the Bakersfield's Greater American Cleanup, which this year is on Earth Day. Of course, along with that is the Greater Bakersfield Green Expo, the only recycled material art competition for high school students throughout Kern County and one of the only ones in the state of California. There, we have the opportunity to give students $6,000 in scholarships for their creativity. The Great American Cleanup and the Greater Bakersfield Green Expo, really, the premise is to educate, to engage, and to encourage. That's why when everybody, since the Great American Cleanup is now a year-round event for Bakersfield, it's really the celebration of everyone's efforts for the year. And so, everybody comes to Yoko's Park after doing a cleanup, possibly that morning, and then we have a barbecue for everybody. We give out all of the recognition for all of the people that have put their efforts forth throughout the year, the groups that make up, keep Bakersfield beautiful, and also work within Kern County. Kern County Waste Management was one of the founding sponsors of the Greater Bakersfield Green Expo, and still are one of the leading sponsors for the Green Expo. The Green Expo is actually underwritten totally by your Kern County haulers, in conjunction with, of course, the City of Bakersfield. And so, the county has always been a great part of what we do for Kern County high school students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Paul Ballou. I am Secretary of Ashes Cannabis Dispensary. We, the members of Ashes, a collective come before the Board seeking answers to questions the Board does not want asked or answered, but answer you will. Ashes extended an olive branch to the Board, and the Board wasted no time turning that branch over to the legal counsel, so they could beat us with it. Well, today is your turn, and our members want redress. Be prepared to answer every question. The Board believes their thought processes should not be put under court scrutiny. That's their legal right. Make no mistake, your thought processes will be put under public scrutiny. That is our right. So, sit back and enjoy your morning. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nelson Vascas. I'm the President of Ashes Dispensary. As you can see, some of our members come here. We have over 500 members in our dispensary, and we do have some questions that we would like to ask you. These people have taken the time out to come out today out of their work schedule to speak, and that is their right, and hopefully you are listening today. The first question I would like to ask is to you, Mr. Gleason, since you seem so amused by this. Over 50 of our members have called your offices. How come you haven't returned any of our calls, or their calls?
Hello, my name is Dawn L. Brunson. I have a question for the whole Board. Have any of you ever actually, ever visited a medical marijuana dispensary, not as a patient? May I please invite all you guys to come?
Hi, my name is Deana Dunleian, and this is for the whole Board. Will you put our health above the political and legal games and just help us?
Hi, my name is Karen Levek, and I'd quickly like to share some personal information. I'm a cancer patient. I have tumors that are in my spinal cord. They cannot be removed. I'm not supposed to be walking, and I am walking. Medical marijuana has improved the quality of my life. I'm able to function without taking narcotics or anything else, and this dispensary is extremely important to me. Traveling is difficult. Getting here today was difficult, but my question to the Board of Supervisors and Mr. Schreivenner is, why did the county given a monopoly to sell medical marijuana to the very dispensaries that it contended were breaking the law? That's my question, but also, I would like to address you guys in asking, what can we do to improve the quality amongst the Board members and understanding a need for these patients? To have it regularized, to go to a dispensary where you're safe, where not having to approach the average criminal on the street? This is a medication that needs to be regulated. It needs, we need your help, guys. We desperately need your help, and myself, I wouldn't have the quality of life that I have, and I thank you very much for listening to us. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Leah Sharp. I don't like to reveal too much about my problems, but I have kidney failure and lupus. I only have one kidney left. I can't drive very well, even though I have a license, and for me to drive two hours from Kernville to a dispensary in Bakersfield where I don't feel very safe in walking down, and I've been approached by people, and I don't like that, and I find that when I can go to this absolutely professionally-run dispensary where you think you're, in a hospital, it's so clean and perfect, and they're so knowledgeable on the medicine, that it's, for me to go five miles, I still have to get a ride, but at least they don't have to drive me 100 miles round trip. Okay? And we really need to keep this dispensary open. Okay? I've been legal since 1980, when I got legal in a hospital in Los Angeles, California, and I do not take any other medications for my pain or my physical problems that I have other than that, because I, my body can't tolerate it, and that's how that goes. So, I appreciate the time, and I hope you consider this, and thank you.
Good morning. My name's Kimberly Tish, and I too am a patient of Ashes. I've been going there for a while now, and without them, we would have to travel 100 miles, and that's just, it's too hard for us. I have a lot of medical issues, too, that without the medical marijuana, I'd have to take narcotics, and I refuse to do that. It wreaks havoc on my kidneys and the rest of my organs. My question is to you, Mr. Gleason. How many new businesses have actually opened up in Wofford Heights in the last two years? And what is your plan for our community's development? You want to take away this one place that's thriving, and it's helping the people of the community in other ways than just us. So, I'm just wondering, what are you going to do to help the development if you're willing to take this one away? Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Pamela Och-Treena. My question's for you, Chairman Scrivner. You've allowed over 10 dispensaries to open in Rosamund. Why can't we have one in Wofford Heights?
Board Chairman, my name's Kevin Jeskey, and I have a question for you. How is our dispensary an immediate threat to the public health and safety and welfare? I am a heart patient, and I depend on this store. This store is the closest to my house. I cannot drive or make it down to Bakersfield, so I ask you to come visit our store and see how it's running. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for your consideration on all of our questions that we have today. My name is Cherie Jamison, and my question for you, Mr. Couch, is, why has the county singled out our dispensary for special treatment? Are you trying to make an example out of us? Thank you for your consideration today.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jonathan Hart, Kernville resident for the last year. I'm a member of Ashes Alto Sierra Holistic Health Exchange Services. I moved to Kernville a year ago from Los Angeles. Why? The mountains, the wonderful people, and a clean way of life. A member of Keepers of the Kern up there, I spend every Monday and Tuesday, except for today, cleaning the river. Also a member of Friends of the Hatchery. It's a volunteer organization up there to promote fishing for the youth and for the community. I moved up to Kernville in that community for the wonderful people and the outdoors. When Ashes opened, and I noticed it about six months ago, it was a breath of fresh air. When I was a young kid, I'm 36 now, I may look young. I am 36. When I was 12, I had a terrible water skiing accident. Since that time, I sit at a keyboard all day typing. I do computer research, computer security research is really not all that interesting. I have terrible back pain. I barely made it down here today. I was sitting in that chair over there in massive pain. I do not take opiate-based drugs or any others. I've taken them in the past. It wreaked absolute havoc with everything about my life. I became legal three years ago approximately. When I moved, again, when I moved up to the Kern River Valley and I saw that Ashes was there, it was a breath of fresh air. Angels came down. It was amazing. I've been driving down to Bakersfield every once in a while for other dispensaries. It's terrible on my body. I do not feel safe down there, unfortunately. I have one question for you, Mr. Gleason. How is shutting down our club promoting job creation and free enterprise in the Kern River Valley? I have a brief follow-up. One of the other reasons I moved to the Kern River Valley is for free enterprise. I hate doing what I'm doing career-wise, and I want to help the valley thrive. I want to start my own business, and this is unfortunately a poor example of enterprise being shut down with no due cost. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Johnny Getz. I am a patient of Ashes, and I've been a patient for about, well, two months now. It's a volunteer organization up there to promote fishing for the youth and for the community. I moved up to Kernville in that community for the wonderful people and the outdoors. When Ashes opened, and I noticed it about six months ago, it was a breath of fresh air. When I was a young kid, I'm 36 now, I may look young, I am 36. When I was 12, I had a terrible water skiing accident. Since that time, I sit at a keyboard all day typing. I do computer research, computer security research is really not all that interesting. I have terrible back pain. I barely made it down here today. I was sitting in that chair over there in massive pain. I do not take opiate-based drugs or any others. I've taken them in the past. It wreaked absolute havoc with everything about my life. I became legal three years ago approximately. When I moved, again, when I moved up to the Kern River Valley and I saw that Ashes was there, it was a breath of fresh air. Angels came down. It was amazing. I've been driving down to Bakersfield every once in a while for other dispensaries. It's terrible on my body. I do not feel safe down there, unfortunately. I have one question for you, Mr. Gleason. How is shutting down our club promoting job creation and free enterprise in the Kern River Valley? I have a brief follow-up. One of the other reasons I moved to the Kern River Valley is for free enterprise. I hate doing what I'm doing career-wise, and I want, I want to help the valley thrive. I want to start my own business, and this is unfortunately a poor example of enterprise being shut down with no due cost.
Good morning. My name's Johnny Getz. I am a patient of Ashes, and I've been a patient for about, well, two months now. But I've been a patient since I was raped at nine. I've been a patient since I was, you know, given the bipolar schizophrenic PTSD. You know, I may not have back problems and everything else that other patients have, but I do have traumas that I choose to deal with, with, you know, with medical marijuana that I take no alcohol, I take no, no legal drugs like heroin or opiates, which are far easier to get in that county, in this county, any county really, where it's easier to drink alcohol and run people down where it's been proven. And pretty much, you know, you get, you get away with giving out legal dope, legal heroin, legal crack, legal drinking that runs, you know, and my question is, you allow alcohol, you allow crack, you allow all of these things, meth that go into pills, but you won't allow a safe, medically-approved, scientifically-approved medicine? So, my question is, why are you going to shut down a dispensary that is not only scientifically-proven, stops drunk driving, stops people from, you know, pretty much doing anything that you accuse them of, you know, reefer madness, whatever? But that's pretty much my question is, why would you shut down a dispensary that's actually medical and allow alcohol and other substances into the community? Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Cheryl in Littlejohn. I've been a Wofford Heights resident for almost 30 years. I raised three children there. I myself am a patient of Ashes. I, back a couple of years ago, broke my hip, had to get a hip replacement. I was taking 12 to 15 Norcos a day. I now take no, no medication except the medical marijuana. I belong to a nonprofit organization, and Ashes has given freely to our Christmas Basket Program, our Scholarship Program, and our Disabled Children Program. And my question to you, to Mr. Nations, is, on June 21st, you stated that a moratorium would not impose a hardship on cannabis patients. Do you still believe that today?
Thank you.
My name is Jay Jamison. I'm the Treasurer of Ashes Dispensary. I'm also a property owner in Mr. Gleason's district. I'm the landlord that leased this facility to the corporation. I have a couple of questions here. Just to let you know, these are just the members we could get in two weeks on short notice. Several other members will be here in two weeks if we don't get answers to our questions. This is what we can get done in short notice. Okay? Mr. Maggard, you've been a little ignored here. The only private citizen to speak in favor of the moratorium has been David Fleuhart. Do you see the irony in that? Couple of questions for the whole board. Will you direct Mr. Nations to dismiss his motion for preliminary injunction against us until we have a trial? Will you direct Mr. Nations to dismiss his lawsuit against us today so you can help these patients? Will you allow our dispensary to file a conditional use permit to allow us to operate until you hash out the new medical marijuana regulations that evidently you'll eventually get to someday? One question for Mr. Couch. After Measure G was invalidated, why didn't the board draft new regulations and go back to work and do the will of the voters instead of pretending that you had a right to shut every shop down? The court called you out on that? I was here a year ago when you passed the moratorium saying you guys should litigate or you should legislate instead of litigate. Why are you still litigating? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this subject? Okay, I don't see any. Mr. Medina, I know you want to speak on something else. We're gonna, I'd like to try to respond in general to some of the questions that you have asked, and so I see Ms. Oviad in the back. Lorelei, I'd like to ask you, she's our Planning and Community Development Director, working on an EIR right now, and also any possible regulations as far as the dispensaries go. And so, I'd ask you to give folks a status update on where we are right now and the schedule for when you think we may come back for this item. I know you all are going to be very interested in that. And then, I've got one, one response to one of the questions that was specifically directed at me and the, and the community of Rosamond, and then I'll ask if any other board members want to make comments. So, Ms. Oviad, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm Lorelei Oviad. I am the Director of Planning and Natural Resources. It is actually not a someday thing when it'll be before your board. It will be in front of your board in September. So, the courts also directed that we do a full environmental impact report. That environmental impact report, we already did a scoping meeting. If you go to our website, there is a link that shows the regulations that we are proposing as well as the possibility of a full ban. So, there are two options. We will be releasing an EIR here in about a month, along with a fiscal analysis that shows the amount of revenue that could be reaped from regulation as well as the implications of a ban. We will then go to the Planning Commission in August, where people will be invited to give public testimony, and then this will be before your board for public hearing in September, October. We'll have more than one hearing before we hear a decision from you, hopefully. I will be making a recommendation in July to the Planning Commission. However, in June, moving back in time, in June, I intend to reach out to your board to set a special workshop where we can have a dialogue on the regulations we're bringing forward. I will defer to Mr. Nations on the legal aspects, but the moratorium is in place not because of public health and nuisance or any of these other conversations, but under a government code that allows us to stop permitting and stop businesses, not specifically this business, but any business, from opening while we were going through a planning process. The environmental impact report has to look at a snapshot of impacts, and therefore, we needed to stop development for a period of time so that we could get our hands around what the cumulative impacts are and what the possibilities are. So, that was the reason for the moratorium. I have not interacted with this particular dispensary owner. I'll make sure that they have my card and, so that I can explain what the regulations are, what the pathway is. Finally, I'd like to comment. Given the moratorium, given your board's direction, and given the timeframe, the Planning Department will not entertain a conditional use permit and a determination of similar use and process that since it will trigger another EIR. Therefore, it is redundant and a burden on this dispensary to ask them to do that kind of sequo analysis when we are already proceeding with that. Therefore, you know, this is in Mr. Nations' purview in regards to opening this after the moratorium, and those are all the facts that I have at this time. Was there anything else you'd like me to address?
No, I think that that covered everything in your shop. I really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nations, I'm going to afford you an opportunity to respond to anything you'd like to.
As alluded to in the presentations, we are in litigation with Ashes Dispensary. They opened after the imposition of the moratorium, so they're in violation of the county ordinance. We have filed a motion for preliminary injunction to enjoin them from operating in violation of the moratorium. Beyond that, I prefer not to comment since we are in litigation with them. Thank you.
Okay. One thing I would like you to comment on, though. One of the speakers asked why we would, why we would have an injunction against this particular dispensary and not, I think they said, 10 in Rosamond. And so, could you speak to the situation, not just in Rosamond, but county-wide, but specifically in that location, please?
Most of the dispensaries operating in Rosamond are in violation of the moratorium as well, and we are seeking similar legal relief against them. The board did not authorize or allow that many dispensaries to open. There are a few that were open prior to the moratorium, and they will be allowed to continue opening, but as to those that opened in violation of the moratorium, we are seeking legal recourse.
Thank you, Mr. Nations. I see Supervisor Perez has punched in.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to say thank you to everybody who's come out today. I imagine some of you have traveled a good way to be here, and I am so grateful for your educating this board about your personal experiences, about what it means for your life and the impacts that it can have on your life, and that it is having on you. So, I appreciate that. You guys have been caught in the crosshairs of an immensely complicated emerging issue. This board, before I ever joined the board, before three members up here joined the board, attempted to pass an ordinance that would allow the functioning of these dispensaries for people like you. And that was shot down by the courts because we had not engaged in what you heard earlier is called an EIR, Environmental Impact Report. So, the court found that we did not comply with state law in trying to set up an ordinance that would give lawful users that are respectable and have, are going to a respectable business to continue to get the medicine that you need. That was shut down, and it sort of sent everything into a bit of a chaos, because the ordinance was found to be illegal. We're now in this circumstance with a state law 64, which we know passed last year in California. It has left this board with limited options, and I am so sorry for the imposition on your personal life. Your stories are compelling. I think you're being authentic, and I feel responsible to be part of the solution that allows you to function, to lawfully obtain the medicine that you need to treat your ailments. This board has been put in a very precarious position because we have numerous dispensaries, as you can imagine, that open up one after another. They do not function, many of them, like respectable businesses. Many of them are in my district. I drive by multiple dispensaries on my way home, and I know there are many people like you that are frustrated about this reality, because you're being lumped into the larger bad actors and players that are out to make money, are not interested in playing by the rules, or having a reputable business over the long term, and you're suffering because of that. And I am so sorry. This board is moving rapidly to engage the environmental impact realities. We cannot do any of this without that report. We were already shut down by the courts, as you know. So, we are moving quickly. We are moving rapidly. I know this board is sympathetic to your issues, as we've talked about these issues. I know that they care about you. I can say that with full confidence, that we are moving quickly to resolve these issues, to consider the safety matters. We have a sheriff that is giving us some input upon some of the challenges to his deputies, excuse me, in trying to regulate these places. It is immensely complicated, but we are moving quickly, and this is important. I want to have a reputable opportunity or a reputable ordinance if this board moves that direction that allows you guys to get the medicine that you need, but absolutely prioritizes public safety. And we have to demonstrate that that's possible through the proper regulation and the proper public safety enforcement. Otherwise, it is going to continue to be very chaotic and very problematic in many, many ways. So, I just want to say thank you so much for being here. I would ask our County Council to give us some input on what are some next steps for this group potentially? Do they have no recourse until June, September timeline? I think we should, you know, give them some answers regarding their recourse moving forward. These, these folks look desperate to me, and I hate to put them in further harm's way by not being able to inform them of what their opportunities and remedies are before them. So, I ask you to please be patient with us. We're moving as quickly as we can. We have guidelines we have to follow, but I believe in my heart that this board cares about your condition and that they want to do the right thing. But we've had our hands tied in multiple ways for things that are out of our control. So, once again, thank you. I want to help be an asset to you as we move forward in resolving what are new and very complex issues in a rapidly changing environment. So, thank you for being here.
Supervisor Gleason.
Thanks, Chairman. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. There's a difference between looking amused and looking happy to see so many people from District 1, because it's not a regular event. So, thank you all for being here. This board has never taken a position against medical marijuana. We have not ever ta, we have not ever made a statement, I know I have never made a statement saying, denying the benefits and the reality and the science of medical marijuana. So, rest assured that it's not the issue that this board is dealing with. This board is dealing with a problem of regulation and consistency. What we're having to do, and what we've tried to do, is to be consistent all through Kern County on how we manage a poorly regulated, if regulated at all, industry. And now, we have the State of California issuing brand-new laws and regulations concerning this issue, and we're coming to, trying to come to grips as quickly as we can with new emerging laws and an understanding that these businesses need regulation, need leadership, need to understand the rules, and we need to be able to enforce the rules when they don't follow the rules. So, you put all those things together, and unfortunately, right now, that's where you're at. You're just in a place right now where it's uncomfortable. I understand that some persons have business interests with this, but I'm not willing to, to, to provide an inconsistency in our theme of managing this unregulated business. So, I think we are on, unfortunately, a course where we have to be on, which is a legal course, and with the new EIR that's going to come out in September, I think Lorelei said September or sometime soon, we're going to see changes. How those changes unfold and how they manifest themselves, we don't know yet, but that's the direction we're going in. I think most of you have had your questions answered. I'll be, I'll be up in the Kern River Valley on Thursday this week. I'll stop by, and if you have other questions, I'd be glad to sit down with you and talk with you about them. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Supervisor Gleason. Finally, I would suggest that all of you give your contact information to the Planning Department so you can be notified of when we're having the workshops and what the schedule is, et cetera, because your input is something that I know Ms. Oviad's very interested in having throughout the process. So, thank you for being here. Mr. Medina, come on up.
So, you're not going to answer all the questions?
We, we did our best, we did, this, we did our best to answer all the questions. When we have the hearing, there's going to be, there will be...
You said you answered all the questions or answered questions.
Sir, listen, guys, you know, we've tried to be, we've, we've tried to afford you an opportunity to speak. We've been respectful. We've answered, we've answered, we've answered your questions to the best of our ability right now, and that's...
What about, what about the alcohol and the drugs that flow out in the street? Has Mr. Gleason called?
Listen, folks, folks, we'd, we'd ask you to please allow us to move on with our meeting, and we will, we're going to have plenty of other opportunities to discuss this issue. As I said, I recommend that you, that you get on...
We'll be back this afternoon to, to ask more questions.
Mr. Medina, please come on up.
Good morning, Chairman Schreiber and Honorable Supervisors. My name is Louis Medina. I'm the Outreach and Advocacy Manager for Community Action Partnership of Kern, and I'm here to personally invite each of you to attend our 2017 Humanitarian Awards Banquet and Fundraiser, which is scheduled for 6:00 PM Thursday, May 18th, at the Doubletree by Hilton in Bakersfield. Some of you may be aware of our Humanitarian Awards Banquet and Fundraiser. It is an event that celebrates the efforts of outstanding community action champions who are true partners with Cap-K in helping people and changing lives. Supervisor Perez has graciously attended our banquet for the last few years, and she was actually our keynote speaker last year, and I hope that you all will consider attending this year. Our Honorees this year are Bakersfield's new mayor, Karen Go, because of her work with the comprehensive mentoring nonprofit garden pathways, and also because of her public service. Our Community Partner of the Year this year is the Kern County Fair, which greatly helps the Cap-K Food Bank put a dent in hunger through a day of the fair every year since 2012. That's called Feed the Need Food Drive, where they allow fairgoers to get into the fair for free in exchange for a donation of canned goods to the food bank. And our Volunteers of the Year, you might know some of them, are two advisory board members of the Friendship House Community Center, Fuchsia Ward and Joel Scales, who is a county employee. They've done great work volunteering and also fundraising for the Friendship House, and we want to honor their efforts as the Volunteers of the Year. We ask that you take a look at the letter that I brought for you... We ask that you take a look at the letter that I brought for each of you. It's signed by our Executive Director, Jeremy Tobias, who couldn't be here today because he's in Washington, DC at the moment. And just know that our event, even though it takes the form of an award ceremony, is also a fundraiser that helps us with some of our smaller programs, not big programs like Head Start and WIC and Energy, which, you know, are funded through government contracts, but smaller programs like the Friendship House, like the Shafto Youth Center, like our Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, like the Food Bank. And these are some programs that really impact the lives of a lot of people in the community. We hope you'll consider joining us, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. If not, maybe we'll see you on May 18th. Hope to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a public presentation? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on with our agenda to Board Member Announcements or Reports. Supervisor Gleason.
Everybody, I hope you're aware that this weekend, the Blue Angels are coming to China Lake, inviting everybody. Tickets are non-existent, so there's no ticket required. It's free. Just drive up to the gate, and they're going to be letting you on the base, and it's going to be a great airshow. Opens up about 9:00. So look forward to seeing these. It's going to be great weather, great food. The Blue Angels are the best. They're all Navy pilots, and so y'all ought to come out and see them. Thanks.
Do you know anyone who's flown with the Blue Angels? Supervisor Gleason?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I have flown with Blue Angels.
Fantastic. That's great. Thank you so much. Sounds like it's going to be a fantastic show. Any other Board Member announcements? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to item number 11 on our agenda. This is under the Agriculture and Measurement Standards Department. This is a request to employ retired county employee Nancy Finzel, waiving the 180-day waiting period to fill a critically needed position as a Senior Office Service Specialist Step E for the period expiring June 30, 2017, or 960 hours, whichever occurs first effective April 3, 2007. And we have Glenn Van Kauzer with us from the Ag and Measurement Standards Department. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Scribner, Supervisors. In a couple of weeks, our Senior Office Services Specialist is going to be retiring. When she first told us that she was going to retire in November, we immediately requested for training purposes to double-slot her position, but there was no existing list. And so as of today, they're still in the process of recruiting for that position. We have received no list yet. So luckily, Ms. Finzel is willing to stay on in an extra-help capacity. So we asked that you waive the 180-day requirement for her retirement, the necessity that she be gone that long from retirement, so that we can immediately continue her employment so that she can train whoever we do select as her replacement.
Very good. Thank you so much. I'll ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board. Have any questions or comments, or we look for a motion?
A motion approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Van Kauzer, thank you. Next item on our agenda is item number 25. This item is under the District Attorney. Request to appropriate unanticipated revenue from the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services in the amount of $286,107 and proposed addition of two Victim Witness Services Specialist One positions in budget unit 2180 effective March 14, 2017. We have our District Attorney, Lisa Green. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. We are requesting two positions, adding two positions to our Victim Services Unit. And so although I've presented to you before on numerous occasions regarding what Victim Services does, I would like to introduce my Victim Services Director to briefly describe for you and remind you of what this unit does and how they serve the citizens of our community. So I'm going to have Linda Finerty, Victim Services Director, come up and speak to you. Linda?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. I am here today to request approval of two new grant-funded Victim Service Specialist positions for the District Attorney's Victim Services Unit. As you know, in 2013, this board designated the District Attorney's Victim Services Unit to be the major provider of state-mandated services to crime victims in Kern County. In September of last year, the state awarded us additional grant funding in order to continue to meet those mandates. Victim advocates not only orientate victims to the criminal justice system and give case status information. We assist homicide families with finding the funding to be able to bury their loved one, help sexual assault and child molestation victims get the therapy they so desperately need now and not years from now after they have had to live with the effects that happened to them. Assist domestic violence victims and their children to relocate in order to hopefully be able to start living a life without abuse being a part of it. Act as liaisons for the victims with the Deputy District Attorney, detectives, investigators, and probation officers assigned to the case. We let the victims know what their rights are, but probably most importantly, make sure they have a voice in a system where many times it is forgotten that there is another party to the criminal case, not just the defendant. Since 2013, the Victim Services Unit has provided services to approximately 9,000 crime victims in Kern County. Other district attorney's offices in the state with a similar population size and number of victims served have between 16 and 21 advocates on staff. I have nine to be able to serve all of Kern County. Of those nine, currently only have one certified bilingual advocate assigned to the downtown office to assist all of the Spanish-speaking victims for criminal cases in Bakersfield and the immediate surrounding areas. A manageable caseload for a victim advocate to effectively be able to provide all the needed services to a victim should be between 60 and 70 cases. Currently, each advocate in the unit is assigned in managing approximately 120 cases, double the amount that they should be carrying. I myself have a small caseload besides my administrative duties and running the unit in order to be able to make sure victims who come in seeking services from us are helped. With the record number of homicides Kern County experienced last year, and unfortunately looking like we are currently on track for another record year of homicides, it is imperative we add to our staffing in the District Attorney's Victim Services Unit in order to continue being able to provide all crime victims in Kern County the services this board has mandated us to do any time in the victim's life when it is so desperately needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Green?
So our request is to add two positions. There is no additional general fund cost for these positions. We received additional funding from the federal government, from the state government, through Linda's innovative ideas, which I know the board is always looking for that, and I've described this to you before. We received funding from the City of Delano for half an advocate. That advocate works in the Delano Police Department, assists the officers there, and so in that way, we were able to serve that portion of the county. I would say to you, or just to kind of bring this home, that last night I attended a candlelight vigil in California City, and it was for the family members of two homicide victims. The cases are unsolved, and also for a missing person, who's been missing since 2014. And it was really, those kinds of things really touch you because you have the family members speaking. But beyond that, this issue, victim services and what we do, I had one of my advocates along with California City Police Department, they actually planned the candlelight vigil. But 100 people turned out from the community. These services and these types of things that we're able to provide to victims are invaluable. Initially, and just to give you the history, because I know the CIO is, Mr. Alsop has proposed something a little bit different than I'm asking for, and I'm sure that will be part of this discussion. But initially, when we spoke with our CIO analyst, we, meaning my Administrative Services Officer, Scott Johnson, he supported our request since there was no additional general fund cost for these two positions. That, since our initially putting this in, now the landscape has changed somewhat, not for me, but apparently through the CIO's office. So I'm happy to address that. I don't know if that's the time, or I'm not sure what the board knows or doesn't know, but that's where we stand now. So I am asking to have these two positions added at this time, and I'd be happy to discuss it further if Mr. Alsop has anything to add, or if the board has any questions, I'm more than happy to address them.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I think, I'm sure we'll come back to you for some questions. First, I want to ask if there's any members of the public that would like to make comment on this. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Alsop, would you like to respond or to provide any additional information? I don't see on the board letter that the CIO concurs with this request, and so maybe perhaps there's an explanation for that?
Yeah, first off, want to congratulate the District Attorney's Office on this program and also on the grant award. This is an important program to our District Attorney, and therefore it should be an important program to all of us, and it certainly is to me. You know, I look at everything, all positions that come before the CIO's office. It's very important that the public understand that we view the world through a very strict lens. It is, we're weighing the importance of positions and programs with the current fiscal position the county is in. Your board has declared a fiscal emergency countywide. I, along with all of the department heads, are required by you to address a $41 million structural deficit in the county as quickly as possible. And so when we're looking at positions, that's sort of the lens we're looking through. So given the importance of this program, my recommendation back to the District Attorney's Office was that we hire up a couple of contract employees rather than two permanent positions. It's important for your board to understand that while they've received a grant, I'm advised that that grant is a one-time, two-year grant with no funding beyond the two years. And so I thought that it was a fairly reasonable, thoughtful recommendation to the District Attorney's Office that we hire up a couple of contract employees, and then your board in a couple of years' time could come back, working with the District Attorney's Office to determine whether or not you'd like to hire up a couple of additional permanent employees going forward if the revenue was available to fund those. And that would essentially be my recommendation today, respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. I'll now ask if there are any members of the board that have questions or comments?
I do.
Supervisor Gleason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Green, can I ask you to respond to that? That seemed like a reasonable approach. And please, in your answer, would we be able to hire three contract employees instead of two county employees? Or is there some way we could better manage the structure of that service that we're trying to provide? You know, that is what I'm trying, my mind, two county employees, or is there a better structure to satisfy that need?
Supervisor Gleason to the Chair. To be honest, I, in having spoken with my staff, we do not know what, we did not know, and we tried to get the answers prior to today, what Mr. Alsop means when he says a contract employee. It's my understanding that the only contract employees in Kern County are the doctors at KMC and Mr. Alsop himself. So I'm not sure what is in place in the county personnel to move forward, what a contract employee is, and what would it take to hire a contract employee. So that's just one unsolved issue, which I'm sure someone has the answer to. And I'm not saying what Mr. Alsop is saying is unreasonable, but this is what I'm saying to you. The grant doesn't end in two years. It is a two-year grant. And the question that we don't know is whether it'll be renewed. We hope that it will be renewed. We have received so much additional funding from CalOES and from VAWA in the last few years that we actually have had difficulty spending it all and have had to return it to the state. We've had to return funds to the state that could be used for victim services. Ms. Finerty is a perfect example. She came to us after 16 or 17 years, 18, I think, actually, in Ventura County. And when she was hired, she was hired with a grant that had three-years limit, and she was told when she was hired, if we don't get the grant money, then the position ends after three years. And then they continued to get grant money, and she continued until she left Ventura to start our program in Kern County. Every attorney that I hired in the last six years in my office, I tell them, when I'm offering them a position, that fiscal times are uncertain and that under the county policy, last in is first out, so you may be subject to layoffs. And then they make that informed decision. So what I would prefer to do as the elected department head is, and I know the board's aversion to layoffs, but I would prefer to have the two permanent positions thinking, moving forward, and if layoffs need to be done at the end of the two years, then I will have informed the employee of the possibility when I make the offer to them. And two, then they'll take the job basically being in an informed position. I think that in moving forward, it would be better to approach the problem in making them permanent members of the staff rather than try to get something in place that would be for only two years. And so I think that there's another way of approaching this that doesn't expose the county to additional general fund issues. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Green.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I didn't want to create a back-and-forth because, but I do want to get your response to her comments, and this has been the last time I ask you to go against each other, but just to define the contract piece that she was talking about, that you talked about.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, and I have great respect for the District Attorney, and she is independently elected, and I have the utmost respect for that, and I think I've communicated that to her. I believe that the best way to have dealt with this was probably to have had a conversation prior to this being put on the board agenda to talk about solutions, given the fact that we are under such stress in our general fund. I believe that because this is a one-time, two-year grant only, as stipulated in the grant documents, that after a couple of years, this is falling squarely on our general fund. I do want to also point out that the source for this grant, which is the State Penalty Fund, they are experiencing significant revenue decreases they have in recent years. And Governor Brown's state budget proposal that was recently released indicates, and I quote, "That this decrease in revenue is projected to continue. The current funding model is unsustainable, and broad changes are needed to address this problem." So I would really like to try and make this happen for the District Attorney. I believe this is a very, very important program, and maybe if the item were continued for a few weeks, we might be able to get together and figure out a solution that makes sense for all of us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alsop. Just in looking at the agenda, the next, I know that we, I believe we're dark next week. Madam Clerk, is that correct? And so our next meeting would be on March 28th, and so that's what, two weeks away. Any other members of the board have comments?
I have a question for our District Attorney.
Supervisor Perez?
How do you feel about coming back in two weeks and after some conversation about some of the issues that have been raised today?
Supervisor Perez to the Chair. I'm happy to meet with Mr. Alsop. There really wasn't enough time from his email yesterday afternoon to, at that point, to meet, as far as I was concerned. I mean, he had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Johnson earlier in the week, and so all that to say, I'm happy to have that meeting and come back to the board in two weeks.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Ms. Green, we appreciate that, and hopefully the two-week time will afford you both an opportunity to come to a resolution on this, that the CIO... opportunity to come to a resolution on this that the CIO can support. Thank you. Now, do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, so this, the motion, and second is to continue this item until March 28th. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you very much. And this brings us to the final item on our agenda today. This is an item under the Department of Human Services. This is a request to accept in-kind donation from the Bakersfield East Rotary and Omega International Products, Inc., for wall and stucco repairs to all labor, excuse me, and all labor required for the A. Miriam Jamison Children's Center valued at $10,000. We have Deana Murphy, Director of Human Services. Good morning, Ms. Murphy.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Scrivener and members of the board. I am Deana Murphy, your Department Head for Human Services, and I'm here today to recognize and thank the East Bakersfield Rotary, as well as Omega International Products Incorporated. This donation is approximately $10,000 in value. I'm joined today by Rotarians David Sullivan and Fernando Aguirre, and also by James Hill, who is the Regional Manager of Omega International Products Incorporated. So about, as you'll know, as board members, two times a year, we have a barbecue at the Jamison Center, and you know this because you all graciously come out and attend with the children, or have your reps attend with the children, and there are about 120 children who come through the doors to the Jamison Children's Shelter a month. And outside the front of the building, the stucco had lifted and cracked, and while it wasn't something that affected the infrastructure, it was quite distasteful to look at. And our precious partners, our Rotarians, come to these barbecues faithfully, and we do invite our service providers who come in and graciously give to us all year long. And they, they wanted very much to fix the outside of the building, and they wanted to donate everything, but they had run into red tape within the county. And at this particular barbecue, Supervisor David Couch, who at the point was Chairman of the Board, said, "Wait just a minute." And he picked up his phone, made a call, and cleared the path for all this work to be done, for all of the materials to be donated, for all the time for the Rotarians. So thank you so much, Supervisor Couch, for that call, or it would be for not. We'd be sitting with those kids coming through, and the first thing, coming through those doors after being traumatized, seeing a cracked up, almost said something else, huh? A cracked-up exterior to the building. And so the Rotarians came in, and they partnered with Omega International Products, and unprecedented, Omega donated $4,000 worth of product. The Rotarians put up another $1,000. They worked on plans for two or three weeks. They coordinated getting all of the materials there, and then the Rotarians themselves came out over two very long weekends and repaired the outside, the entire outside of the children's shelter, and it's just beautiful. So this is a special donation because they coordinated so much with the private sector individuals to come together, and then the Rotarians, who feel it's service above self, their real, their real goal is always to be serving children and addressing issues of literacy within the East Kern group. So, you know, valiant efforts made on behalf of the children, and they have always expressed to us that, you know, they, they want the children to have a little slice of peace, a beautiful place to be. And it doesn't matter if these Rotarians come out and are providing hundreds of backpacks for celebrating siblings, not only to us but to Casa, or they come out and, and we had a barbecue that we couldn't use for years. It was just a giant, giant brick, brick and mortar barbecue, and it was Tom Birch and David Sullivan who came out and did all the labor with their folks and, and put that back together again so that the kids could enjoy weenie roasts and just things that would bring joy to their heart. But today, I just want a special recognition to, you know, have the privilege to say thank you publicly to these folks for all they do for the Jamison Children's Shelter. David is going to share some of the names of those who volunteered their time over those two-long weekends and grew a few blisters, so David, if you'd come up.
On behalf of Bakersfield East Rotary and Rotarians throughout the world, we, we thank you for this. We said "service above self," that's certainly our motto. The Jamison Center is close to Bakersfield East Rotary's heart. All they have to do is ask, and we respond, and it was great that Supervisor Couch paved the way that we could actually perform this, we do several other functions. Some of the other Rotarians that were involved in this was, of course, Fernando Aguirre, who's with me tonight, Tom Birch, Kristy Swatcel, Sandy Schwartz, John Lipquist, and Her Honor Susan Gill, and Rena K. Schrader. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you to East Rotary, and to Omega International Products. So the requested, requested action is to hear presentation, approve, authorize Chairman to sign a letter of appreciation. I don't see any other members of the public that would like to make comment on this item, so I'll, I'll request a motion from the board.
I'll make that motion and just say thank you, heartfelt thank you.
Second.
You guys are awesome.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you. Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this morning, but we do have some items to consider in closed session. Under County Administrative Office, we have items 41, 42, and 43. Under County Council, 44, 45, and 46, and 47. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session, please.
So moved.
Okay, we are adjourned.